I would ask everyone in the audience to please be quiet. The audio is not the recording. We have the cameras, which is the recording. Members should please be quiet and speak into the mic.
I may know the problem.
Would you read in the certification compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Ann Arbor Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office. Later than the 48th of May, public access rates to tennis seating and feasible copies of minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the open public meeting act.
You're welcome.
Mr. Quinte, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Kleisfeld, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Brenner, Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Grappos.
Okay, so our professionals. If we're affirmed, testimony will give you further support of the treaty for whole construction of the building.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Magno, for engineering. Uh, I'll wait, wait a minute. You're trying to get on?
No, I thought the wifi might have been on, but it says wifi's off, so it should be working fine. Sorry about that.
Okay, so let's go on to the harmonizations and resolutions.
Uh, SD 1948C issued before close times is a major site plan in addition to its existing school. There's a lot back and forth on this resolution.
Uh, I think it's been tabled, um, right, Mr. Jackson, number one?
Do you hear from Doyle on that?
Yes, I had a conference with the chairman and Mr. Doyle. Mr. Sable, I think, had questions about the sidewalks. Chairman made a recommendation that the applicant's going to take back to his client regarding meandering sidewalks, and we're going to hopefully resolve that. But either way, it's put off for two weeks with the consent of the applicant.
Okay, SD 267 is an extension.
Do I come up?
I'm sorry, um, Mr. Sable, Mr. Herzl, I vote and that is it for this one.
Okay, move on second, all in favor, aye.
The next two, Mr. Meyer can also vote on this, Sable and Herzl. SD 2255 is an extension.
Moved, second, all in favor, aye.
SD 2318 also an extension.
Everybody just go.
No, Sable's the last call. Sable, Herzl, and Meyer.
Move on, move on, second, all in favor, aye.
SD 2308, the sheever tour is phenomenal. This is a major site plan. I did email out revisions towards the end of the day today. Um, it looks like Mr. Sable, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Brenner, Mr. Isaacson, who's not here, and Mr. Myers.
Can you have a motion on it? All revisions?
They were pretty extensive. John's office had done them after discussion back and forth through the out of hand. I did not individually review them, so I do not know if it's changed.
John, do you remember what the...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to record.
I correct enough? Do you remember what the revisions were?
I have a memo about that from Philly.
I can tell you our office will change your reporting.
Did Mary want to see this? Yeah, we'll get it out. That worked out. Mr. Magno worked it out and gives revisions for the sidewalk finding.
That was one part of it, but there were a number of other revisions. The resolution said that there were five entrances, there were maybe six entrances.
Three in three out.
Right. Um, well, some no. Actually, two entrances, two, three, and four were right in, right movements only. One and six were actually for both in and, both, both in and out. Um, what were the other changes? Well, there was, there was, there was an issue with the, the path to the, there was, there was, there was a request, I think, for a path to the...
I think that was satisfied. I mean, all the conditions I thought were corrected at the end in the last revision.
We're just really correcting the language. I think that was because it was a complicated, it was a complicated application. There was just some back and forth. Tweaking the language a little bit from what was originally written in there.
Yeah, I, I read the minutes and tried to put it together, and when everybody got their revisions done, I said, okay, which looks right there.
I think there's two items that we needed to, I don't know if it was changed recently or out of this morning, it was, we just sent around the asphalt, asphalt, the sidewalk. We didn't specify on the plan, it didn't specify the width of it, I don't know if that's standard.
I, I thought that was pretty clear in the testimony that it was a meandering five-foot-wide asphalt path.
Okay, it didn't, this has specified in the resolution to make sure that...
Read the conditions. I have them right here. Just, this is on the version I have. I could check emails. No parking on both sides of the streets within 200 feet from the school shall be requested from the committee. Meandering path shall be added to the plan. Entrances number three and four shall be right in and right out movements only. Entrance number two shall be right out only. The middle traffic loop shall be restricted from bus traffic, and both accesses shall be right in, right out only. The approval is conditioned upon the existence of a lease with the industrial commission. If for any reason the lease is terminated, then this approval shall be deemed moot.
That got changed. I'm, this is not, that's not the latest...
That's not the latest version?
No, the latest version was that if any reason the lease is deemed moot, then the wedding hall cannot be used. That's, that, that was the latest version. That got changed.
So far, so good though, up till there?
Uh, I think there may have been some other minor tweaks in there. See if you can find the later version.
Maybe send us.
I have the latest version of the resolution. I just don't know what the changes for stuff which we're looking at. So the latest resolution states this approval is conditioned upon the existence of a lease with the industrial commission. If for any reason the lease is terminated, then the wedding hall cannot be used.
Right, that's the later version. I think, I think, I think condition one was modified a little bit, also the wording is just a little different. It didn't really...
Is sufficient parking without, without, um...
Yeah, I see the school has sufficient parking.
The school did not, the school has sufficient parking. It was only the wedding hall that was said wouldn't have sufficient parking.
So the other addition was regarding the fence that the applicant had required.
Oh, right, two years.
We allow two years from project completion to install a fence in order to get things of fencing to be provided with grant money.
There was an issue with the sidewalk, uh, to the pools impossible. Is that yours?
That's this one also.
Um, the sidewalk to the pool is impossible to put in for the builder. That's what...
The latest version still has that.
Bear with me.
No, I think that got resolved. That got resolved with Dave, I think.
But the resolution that was sent out says a walking path shall be added to the fence from the school to the playground.
Let me just go back to the, uh, I think...
Counsel, so what they're looking, what was the term of the lease at the end of the day?
The, it's not even making those numbers. You weren't here, you weren't here the last meeting.
I was.
You weren't here. I think it was...
At your option.
I don't think it was. Um, I think it was, well, it's...
You went back to that one?
Um, it's definitely de novo, only at our option, not yours. And I believe, yeah, I don't have...
So three, 10 years?
Um, I mean, I don't have it. I was tripping on the record last time. I didn't bring, I didn't bring the file because it's not...
Oh, hold on, every, wait a minute. This is what we have to be careful with, especially in a, one person at a time.
Sorry about that. That, that testimony was on the record at the hearing. I apologize for not taking the file. I really thought this resolution was done. The one that Ally had, the one that Ally wrote from before was the latest version.
Yeah, um, we get the market copy from her.
It was, probably came in close to three o'clock.
I forwarded it, it was sent over by email, but I understand, you know, obviously it didn't mean all of us. I've seen it.
No, I apologize. We only got the first draft from Mr. Jackson's office yesterday.
All right, I have it, I have it right here. I'm sorry, this is the last in the chain. I apologize, but you want me to read the conditions?
Sure.
Applicants shall request from the township committee, there shall be no parking on both sides within 200 feet. A meandering half, asphalt paths shall be added to the plan. Entrances two, three, and four shall be right movements only. Condition upon the existence of a lease with the industrial commission. If for any reason the lease is terminated, then the wedding hall cannot be used. A walking path shall be added to the plan from the school to the playground pool area. A fence shall be provided in the front of the school to the satisfaction of the board engineer plan or somebody that doesn't affect site triangles. The school will be allowed two years from project completion to install the fence in order to get funding, so the fencing can be provided with grant money. Uh, final coordination of designs, plans as necessary shall be addressed with the resolution. Compliance submission should approval be granted. All of the building access points shall be indicated on the site plan and coordinated with the architectural plans. They shall be addressed with the resolution compliance, uh, submission. Creating information shall be completed with the resolution. Compliance storm water management shall be addressed with the resolution compliance. Site triangle distances shall be proposed for any vehicular egress points to swarth more. They shall be addressed with resolution compliance submission and proposed shade training utilities, which shall be properly labeled. And then, um, just one other place. That's it. So, and Ally, the resolution that is, uh, there's an email to you that says resolution compliance.
I don't have the evidence here, so I don't think that... I just gave the base information.
Based on what our attorney has just read, what has the motion on this resolution? Mr. Renner, move. Mr. Stern, second, all in favor, aye. Okay, anymore?
Yes, uh, SD 2363, Meyer's subdivision. I'm sorry, Mr. For the following resolution, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Isaacson, and Mr. Meyer vote. Mr. Brenner, you can only vote on this one.
Okay, Stern, move. Move second. Smart second, all in favor, aye.
SD 2359, major subdivision.
Motion. Move. Move. All second, all in favor, aye.
And the last one, SD 2345, Meyer's subdivision.
Move. Second, all in favor, aye. Yeah, one on the nine.
Uh, number nine is off, but it doesn't require a reservation.
Right.
Okay, um... Yes, under correspondence, we actually have a new I M S added on. Mr. Jackson has spoken with the applicant and their representative regarding previous approval. They want to trust you. Mr. Jackson felt that it was appropriate for administrative under correspondence without notice. You have a copy provided by the applicant of multiple resolutions, as well as a copy of a cost estimate versus costs on top of Mr. Pepper's claim that Mr. Jackson...
Which one is it?
The separate pile of listed there that has a cost estimate starting on the top in the resolution of 1997 and 1998 right up here.
Thank you.
Good thing we just checked on the applicant. Uh, as Ally indicated, it is with, uh, resolution SD 1997 and 1998. Um, resolution 1997, um, reads specifically to page three, paragraph number three. Spoke about the applicant had agreed to acquire a nearby parcel to destruct 10,000 square foot community center. Be available for use for the nearby residents. Uh, all this has, has occurred. Um, it goes on to talk about the applicant shop placed $10,000 per lot as each lot is sold into attorney trusted capital to serve as a guarantee that the clubhouse shop be built. The funds placed in escrow may be utilized by the builder for the sole purpose of constructing a clubhouse to service the nearby community. Those monies have been placed into escrow. How many units, uh...
Twenty units apparently.
Twenty, they're, and that's actually twenty units. And all the monies have been placed in escrow. However, and very wise to represent the buyers as he was getting well, I'm sorry, I apologize, the sellers. Um, those monies are, have been placed in escrow. Township, subsequently, there was a developers agreement that was signed.
Not directly signed. Mr. Brenner has stopped down for this application.
Um, there was a developers agreement assigned. I'm still not really clear as to the reason why, but township will not allow these monies to be released to be used for the construction of, of the community center. Even though that's what the intent was, that's what the money's for, that's what the buyers want and the seller wants.
I, I think the reason, and I was involved in that, why they didn't want to release, the monies were to be like a guarantee.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, I know what you want to do, and I don't think there's an issue with what you want to do. We gotta say this, the same thing as having the money put aside with the bond, keep covered.
But the, the, the resolution specifically states that the funds, the funds placed in escrow may be utilized by the builder for the sole purpose of constructing a clubhouse to service the nearby community.
There was also language that said they were guaranteed performance.
No.
Anyway, keep, keep going. So I think we...
And then there's, there's another resolution, uh, that's also to have, again, same thing. It says, uh, no C O's are issued to the recreation area of the community center. I think it's true.
Well, tomorrow, that's a separate application. That's all the twenty houses.
These two applications came in separate, however, they are connected in terms of, the board at the time wanted to make sure that everything was done at the community center got filled. They have started construction of the community center. It's going up, foundations in, uh, borders in order, it, it's moving along. Uh, our request this evening is to allow us to, um, basically to allow the closings that are current C O's to be issued so that the funds can be used to continue, uh, the construction of the community center. Uh, in that form, the C O's are being, the houses are almost not, they're about, someone's been two and four weeks away from, from being...
Is this two applications, SD 1997 and 1998? One of them, the twenty houses are all built, they're all sold. $200,000 is sitting in my escrow account from those twenty closings. Now we're talking about, I think it's SD 1998, the later one, the next twenty houses, C O's are being withheld. Houses are built, C O's are yielding, they are represented, the seller on the outsales, which is the reason I stepped in, not the separately to that of. So, and with these, these houses are built, buyers have mortgages, they're ready to go for financing, and all the C O's are being held up because the community center is not, doesn't have a C O. They've commenced construction, so there are, I think, two requests. One request is that the $200,000 being held in my trust account, I should be able to pay actual bills towards the construction of that block. That's really what that money was put there for. If you recall, the buyers had come up and everybody had concerns that we couldn't get bills. So we said, we withhold $10,000 for each closing for that money to be utilized towards construction. For it to just sit in my trust account serves nobody any purpose. I don't get interested on it, no, nothing happens. So one request is that we should be able to utilize that money to pay the bills, which the township, it's actually, it's actually been coming from the township engineer's office. They have not been allowing us to do that. And the second request is that, which one is this one? The one that said that, because it doesn't, 1998 or 1997, that we can be able to get C O's on that, on that application as well.
Was there also, uh, part of the proposal to, to place that money with a bond?
Yeah, so what we, what we have provided to the board is a cost estimate, uh, and a bond, which we will, we will actually pay for and ensure the board act favorably. We will have, in a day or so, a bond if we not finish and complete the building, um, the community center that's currently under construction.
Guys, I can't, it sounds like a big of all the side conversations.
So, so what, you know, and I had emails with, with Jeff Steiger on this, Steger, Steger. And, and what I had said is that money is like a guarantee, so you don't get off the bond until it's all been completed, just like, you know, typical bond. So they're, they're willing...
So, they're, they're willing to, they proposed replacing that with a bond. So it's up to the board to determine if it's just a satisfactory, if it would be a bond, this money in the escrow, and then I can use the money that's in escrow to build a place. And then in the meantime, the, uh, you know, they, they would then have the bond there in lieu of all this money.
Who would the bond be paid to?
Well, the bond would be, I would presume, in a form satisfactory to the township and the township engineer and our board engineer, that in the event it's not completed, the bond would be available to township.
They'll build the community center.
Right.
And just, and just a reader, construction start, the foundation's in, uh, there are bills coming, and this is the, the reason why it's kind of a pressing issue. One, we want to get, the money that's just sitting in the escrow cap, literally simply builds for, for, for the community center, continue the construction. And two, that we can have some closings, so the money, they continue also, uh, paying for the construction.
Me personally, if money goes, uh, in other terms, the money goes strictly for the synagogue as you go. I wouldn't have an issue with that to other ones.
I think it's, 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 it's like having both. The money gets paid toward the synagogue, and then there's a bond on top of that. So in some ways, it's, it's double.
Double.
Is it getting ten thousand dollars per house, or ten, per house?
Well, two hundred thousand dollars in escrow.
Yeah, so, so that money's going into the shul, and then there's a bond on top of that. But it's the board's determination.
Is, is the bond a new element?
Yes.
You're proposing that so you can free up the cash?
For we should be paying for.
It's the cash flow issue. Okay, I get it. Um, if you've got a bond from a reputable company, that's as good or better. And the bond's for the full amount of the work?
Yes, we've, we're going to have a cost estimate, uh, we do, and, and it's gonna have to be reviewed by, uh, the township engineer, Mr. Steger, and if you have to comply with it, we gave the cost estimate to reputable bond company.
So the, who's, so there's not a separate contract for, usually you have contract to do the work. You have a performance bond that says, I'll get the work done, but you'd have to fix price contract to get the community center done. Who's doing the work for the community center?
Developer.
So there's not a separate contract for that?
And, and he's, he's, how much is it gonna be, uh, the, the cost estimate?
The most elegant way would be to have the contractor, the developer, say, I want to give you a guaranteed price not to exceed this number. Then pair that with a bond, and then you're covered on both sides. Because if there's a cost overrun, your bond isn't covered. If you're bonding only for this estimate, estimates go back, right?
But, that's the reason why we give it to the, the, where we, the township engineer should review it and tell us if this is correct or not. I mean, we just need the board first to say, the concept works. If the concept works, the engineer, you know, we'll leave it to him, um, indicate that it's correct or not.
Typical bonding procedures, um, I assume in other townships as well as in the, a cost estimate is prepared, then the amount of the bond is for the cost estimate plus twenty percent for the continuous.
Right.
So it would be for the amount plus an additional twenty percent.
I agree. Don't take this personally, you have, I was guarding the head house. So if the estimate, if they said the estimate's two hundred thousand dollars, it's really going to cost seven, then we're not covered.
Well, then the, the township is not doing its job in looking over the cost estimates and making sure that there's sufficient bonding. You know, they use takeoffs for what the cost should be. This is a very common.
Okay, good, my. So, Mr. Jack, I think if we have a bond from a reputable company going to township and a estimate confirmed, this estimate's confirmed by professionals, I think we're good.
Okay.
This method will be your fourth guarantee?
May it be two years? May it be two years?
No, it's up to you. If you're more comfortable with the money being in the account, then, then that's, but the cash is going into the building.
We will agree that all payments are very, very thorough. All through, all the, the, the invoices directly associated with the community center. Uh, and additionally, it's very, very good to confirm there are twenty buyers who are basically going to, who are going to have mortgages if you want to close, if they can. Initially, we're trying to protect them, we're trying to get them, yeah.
Mr. Pepper, and will, will this proposal facilitate the, uh, cost completion of the, of the community center in any way?
Yes.
How so?
Well, additionally, we're able, we'll have the money in front of your hand to continue the construction. Um, as I indicated, the foundation's in, uh, we've confirmed that the board, um, brought in the frame and they've ordered, uh, as, uh, certain, the cash flow issue. If we want to keep the construction moving, um, this is the finance that's over the year. This is the monies from, uh, monies escrow, and the actual money from closing will be able to be used, so we can disrupt it, it'll not be actually begun, um, as opposed to the long-aged process of the finances.
Can I just? We never, the township doesn't hold performance bonds for, for the construction of community centers. Because it's not, it's not basically a better structure at the end. I mean, if, if, if we're gonna do this, the bond estimate has to include hiring the GCP. And it's, it's better with more, the township's not building.
We have no objection to conditions placed by the board and by the township engineer. We just need the concept, so that they could actually do that work, because they, maybe they won't be able to secretly increase that. We will agree those conditions, uh, like I said, township engineer agreeing, um, to what you want, we will comply.
And furtherance of Mr. Flank's, um, comments, one of these resolutions is being changed to say, rather than holding in escrow money if you're going to assign a bond. The other resolution is being changed to say, COs can now be issued if the community building has been constructed. So there are two changes that we are considering.
Guys, where is this on the agenda, like?
It's not, given that it's a, it does not require notice for Mr. Jackson, it's considered a general board matter. It's not required public notice to come on the agenda and.
I think this has an administrative change to the, uh, completion mechanism. So the board is able to decide that, you know, we want to have notice and have people on it, but my recommendation is that this could be done administratively.
I usually need to read them, I go through the sites. This, this is a pretty big, big issue. I don't think we should shove it in like that, so my opinion.
That's, that's the board's fault.
The only question is, the only question is, you feel, uh, you're guaranteed that the shul be built. It was, it was involved there, because you have a bond. They give you a bond instead of a CEO, that's the only difference. My correcta is being built, and I look at it, see how, how far it's been built next to.
If you have, if you have an estimate verified by our professionals, it said, this thing should cost this amount. Put on a GCP, put on this stuff, then they don't do it. And if we have a reputable bond company back again, that's actually better than the two hundred thousand dollars at, at your best, John. I mean, like, if they don't pay the subs, they don't show up. It's hard enough to get subs to show up on the business.
In, in some ways, the bond is a better arrangement because it's for the full amount. If they don't build the houses, if they don't have the closings, the twenty thousand or the ten thousand.
We still didn't have a community center.
But the, but the bond's in place, so even if they don't finish the rest of the houses, I would think the bond would, would be able to cover.
Well, she has the two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that, that is, because it was only required on more, it was only required on SD nineteen ninety-seven.
The other ten, the twenty, it's not required.
It's not required. The way, the way it was approved was that SD, I think, I think it's SD nineteen ninety-seven was the one that's required that ten thousand be held on every one. The, the next one that came later, I guess the board felt comfortable that it was gonna be two hundred thousand. I'm sorry, I think I'm a numbers type, but, no. But they felt comfortable that they're just, if there was money in escrow, that, if only they withhold COs going further, the shul, big E, community center would get built.
My, my recollection of how this all unfolded, I thought it was Josh Schump, where, where is he? When he was on the board, the, there, there were, no, there, there, there was a, uh, a concern by him that there was no requirement for a community center in this particular development because of the number of units per section. So, so Josh looked at it, and he thought, well, you know, there should be a community center for this. And it was like a loophole, or you might call it strategic planning on the board of the developer to make it in smaller blocks. The board imposed that as a condition, as a means of fulfilling the intent of a community center for development over a certain size. That was done after several sections of this area were completed, if my, if my memory serves me. And, and this was kind of put together afterwards. That's why only a couple of them have this condition. And, you know, Mr. Flank, that's my recollection.
That's correct, that's correct. I had the applications down, like you were. Also, I just wanted to clear, the resolution indicated that the ten thousand dollars had to be used for the construction of, of the community center. For some reason, when the belt review got done, there was something that the county put down the dollar, and it didn't get released. Uh, so that's one portion of it. As soon as we have dollars, we go right to the, the construction.
What is the, uh, overall cost of this facility?
Somewhere between, oh, it'd be about, manage it, it's around seven, it's not seven hundred thousand.
We're talking about seven hundred thousand dollars, building, the foundations.
Foundations in.
Excavational, the permits are full, and you're very, you're poised to put two hundred thousand into it. And, and so then your bond would be for another five, six hundred thousand dollars.
Full amount.
So the full amount, okay.
Four hundred bucks.
Well, I was gonna say, they're really putting in a hedge, because they're bonding for the full amount, but the first, but, but the first two hundred thousand's gonna go right into the building.
Don't they, you feel comfortable with the bond as a, as a, as a, as a?
It has nothing to do with us.
Sorry, I, I just.
In, in some ways, this may be a better alternative, because you're bonded for the full amount, even if the development doesn't get completed, if, um.
Who's gonna say what amount to ask me bond?
Well, I presume, the township engineer knows how to do takeoffs and estimates, and the conservative that.
The township engineer's number is always higher, substantially higher, and it really costs to build.
How many, well, they do that by design. That's, that's what they do to build a cushion.
And they, they come up with numbers that are higher than it's gonna cost, and then they have the factor that Ally mentioned on top of it, so they need more. And each, each one of these payments that comes out of the two hundred thousand dollars that the resolution said they can spend, makes it lower that less to be built, so the pound is, is covered.
How many square feet is this facility, the building itself? Is it a five thousand square foot structure, three thousand, two thousand? Does anybody know?
Well, since ten, and that's such a good question, because seven hundred divided by ten thousand, seventy bucks a square foot.
That's where we get there.
That's a very, that's a ballsy one.
So, we, we have to, uh.
Again, we're, no problem having.
But the engineer will, will, they're, they're savvy at that.
Seventy bucks a square foot?
The number they can bond it is gonna be the number that the township engineer says is likely to cost to build.
But if, if you guys are coming here, I'm on your side for a while there. If you, if you're, if you're coming here to say your community center's gonna cost six hundred fifty-one thousand or ten thousand square foot facility, that's sixty-five bucks a square foot. You can't build a doghouse for sixty-five bucks a square foot.
I, I would argue with that, but the, 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 they, they gave the, the developer gave a cost estimate, they gave a course of what it is.
No.
That's not the amount that's being.
All right, look at me now, can you build a community center for sixty-five bucks a square foot?
It's not, it's not, it's gonna be approved by the township engineer, it's not gonna be built.
Yes.
Then you raise a suspicion if you're coming to me with an estimate of sixty-five bucks a square foot.
I have a feeling it probably didn't include the dollar, it's in the escrow, because that's forty.
But can I, can I interrupt? The, the amount is a theoretical amount, because the township engineer is going to review the cost through the takeoffs and a, you know.
Please, please throw that amount right, the township engineer will make sure it's the right amount. I've worked with them a long time, and I've never seen them come back to the number.
The mound hasn't been filled full of mounds.
I, I want to remind everyone we need to talk one at a time.
Okay. Okay.
And don't misunderstand, I'm just giving you information, it's the board's decision, not my decision.
No, I mean, to me, if, if they're not gonna build a building, the township will have a box, they can, they can.
Time frame.
That's what happens.
We need to put a timeframe on this.
Well, I don't know if this contract is resolution.
I believe that was the intent. With the second resolution, it says no COs should be issued.
Well, it will not be released until the bonding is finished and all those, uh, you know, the bond is posted. That's gonna, that's gonna take a little bit of time.
But can't they, they slept it out for five years?
I'm not interested, it's costing them all the money also.
Well, if it takes them five years to put this all away, that the former conditions remain in effect until the moment that that bond is placed down.
But we want them to move it along. How long's it take to build the thing?
We'll, we'll agree, we'll consider no more than two years. It's gonna take as much as, just to, to, emergency sleep.
So, so your sixty-five dollar square foot community center's gonna take two years to build?
You're asking, you're asking us to have safety, like, in this, what are you saying?
Only two years.
Okay. Okay, now, last one motion, uh, this.
I've moved that we, um, approve it for a bond at the amount determined by some township official, who knows how to do these things, and there's a one-year limit to get the thing built.
I, I were allowed to release the money to escrow to pay directly for.
Yes, certainly.
Doings of.
Yes, sir.
COs can be issued.
And just one, one of the comments was, uh, you know, I think Ally said, the township doesn't do bonds for buildings. I, they do, whenever there's a public building built, they, that always gets bonded. Public buildings always get bonded, and they tend to be more expensive than.
And then, maybe we should say, how does it occur, we always bond the site increments, the engineering departments is not.
Normally, when they're in the development, but on, but that's here, maybe we can pause.
We do not have an estimate for walls and doors.
We're only releasing, we're only voting on it based on the fact that the township will make a bond and they get a bond.
Yes.
If not, it doesn't happen.
Right.
Bond has to be placed before.
Okay, that's right. A hundred percent.
I moved it, yeah.
You agree?
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Flans, one second, roll call.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
I understand.
Mr. Flank.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
And, and Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't make us look stupid.
Let the record reflect that, Mr. Renner, this is.
Now, let's go on to the chairman. Come here. These stuff, these on the agenda, it's a real big one. Makes it easier, or, no, they have, had the last minute of it, so. So, that's, uh, Ally, Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, no, I'm pretty excited.
The board would like to see it a few days.
Okay. Okay, on to the second, the correspondence.
SD twenty-three, this is approval by charter school, which should recognize that they bend to Tom's River, which requires technical site plan approval, because it's split property, and Tom's River requires some changes. It would come back and have.
Anything, Mr. Chairman, Ally, I'm sorry, the applicant, uh, actually happened with Tom's River approved the application. So, to one change, uh, regarding, uh, removal of some parking spaces, uh, prior to the technical stuff. I just want to confirm that we still are in compliance with the late township requirements of parking. We still have sufficient parking. We had excess parking for the board, uh, but the other one, Tom, uh, Tom's River, plus we had. I guess it's Brian Stavall's, the technical aspect, um, I don't want to.
Just want to confirm the testimony completely before this board.
I give this, Brad Leonard, Jackson, Jersey license, professional, and air professional player. We have two maps, uh, A one, the one on the right, is what Tom's River approved. A two is what we approved, and in yellow, I indicated the fifteen parking spaces that Tom's River declined. So we came in with seventy-one, where we need forty-five. Tom's River said, here's the, uh, fifteen parking spaces that are close to the border with Tom's River. Uh, we still have fifty-six, where we only need forty-five, we still comply. We would like to have built them. If you remember, the school was here, we had the place packed, everybody loved it. They're gonna have fifteen less parking places, because people in Tom's River aren't, the board members in Tom's River aren't, uh, as, uh, cooperative.
We have no more of those properties that have more parking spaces.
So that is. And, and again, we comply with the order.
And since, yes.
We would love to have the parks. How many wanted you to win in the park? We think of, of cooperating, uh, to the neighboring property, this is all Tom's River.
Is that gonna be paved, or is it gonna be grass, or trees?
It's gonna be grass now, yeah.
I thought that was reset.
Uh, yeah, some of the property, you can afford it.
And what was the ground in the back?
The, the highlighted one.
Right, the back three, or the.
I, I didn't go to Tom's River, there's, they're not a brown piece, I don't.
Well, that's enough property, man, that's.
This is the problem, this is Tom's River, this is like, what, basically, it's a head Tom's River stuff that's close to, close to the edge of property.
We should join with them, make them, dinner or something, show them around the parking.
I would ask for a motion on this application.
Still parking the grass.
Mr. Sable, move, Mr. Flans, one second, roll call.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flank.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner. And, and Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
SD twenty-seven.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay.
SD twenty-seven, for parking, associates, this is an extension of preliminary funding of your site plans for Ask Chalk, and I have been for the, that's previously, the board was looking for their support in their request to be.
Just to get right to the, uh, the issue, I've, I've had an opportunity to discuss this with the chair and with the applicant's attorney. And I think we're, uh, what happened is there was a question whether there was sufficient parking uh, based on a, a, basically a warehouse enlargement that the applicant proposed. Um, the applicant's attorney has indicated to me that. The applicant's attorney has indicated to me that they're not going to be expanding their personnel or their capacity, it's just storage capacity, basically, warehouse capacity, but there's, in terms of parking. So I think the applicant is going to focus their presentation on whether the present facility has added the parking, and I think they're addressed to produce those approvals. Mr. Gross, is that correct?
That's, that is correct with one minor adjustment. We are, we estimate some increased employment, but that's offset by the number of parking spaces that we're adding, so we'll have just one minute.
So if, there's no review, I think this is just their, their facts, so...
No review?
Because it was at the moment of voting that this issue came up, so the case is already, but it is basically a continuation.
Yes.
So we have to make sure we have all the members...
Who was here the last year?
Uh, no, it was an application, it was a petition.
There was no testimony.
And it doesn't require notice, and they could restart from whatever they had discussed last time.
Correct, there was no testimony last time. Just for the record, my name is Michael J. Gross, a law firm with Giudano, and he's still representing Aster Chocolate. I have with me David Grunheim, who is the president of Aster Chocolate, and Mike Dickel, who's our professional engineer. Last time, when my associate was here, he explained the, the application, but we really didn't focus on the parking because the parking variance was originally granted when this application was approved. However, mostly, I don't think any of you were here when that application was approved, so we wanted to explain to you what Aster Chocolate does. Oh, you were there, I'm sorry. You grabbed, yeah, that's correct. We wanted to explain to you what Aster Chocolate does, and we wanted to explain to you that we have sufficient parking now, and we'll have more than sufficient parking when we expand because we're adding parking. So I'd like to call Mr. Grunheim as my first witness.
Sir, please raise your hand. Do you affirm that the testimony that we'll give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and method of the truth? Please state your name.
David Grunheim.
Oh, your last name?
G R U N H U T.
Please speak with the mic, we need to record it.
And I'm sure, what was your first name again?
David.
David.
Last name is G R U N H U T.
Thank you.
Mr. Grunheim, what is your position for Aster Chocolate?
President.
And how long have you and your family been involved with Aster Chocolate?
Company started in Europe in nineteen twenty-three, and it was reincorporated in New York City in nineteen fifty, and we moved to this location under an invitation from the state of New Jersey in nineteen ninety-seven.
What are your responsibilities?
Everything.
Are you familiar with the plans for your expansion?
Yes.
And can you describe current Aster Chocolate operations, what they do?
We're a company that we tell in the high-end chocolate world, and we import some raw product from Belgium. We service four or five different markets. Just to go through them very quickly, one of them is travel detail, airport shops, service locations, theme parks. Another one is hospitality, we service hotels, restaurants, cruise lines. Another area is cafeteria, in hospitals, and corporations, and also in campuses. And then we do a lot of private label for high-end supermarkets throughout, throughout America and Canada.
And so, for instance, if you go to a Marriott hotel, and you turn down service and you have a little piece of chocolate, it's, it's bound to be Aster Chocolate, right?
Hope so.
And, and where are your operations?
We have our headquarters is here in New Jersey, at six five one, New Hampshire. We have a location in South California, and we have a location in Las Vegas.
And have other states approached you to expand operations there?
Yes, when they heard that we wanted to expand, we were approached rigorously from Virginia, North Carolina, Michigan, and we even got a visit from Kim, who was the lieutenant governor at the time, telling me that she wants to make sure that we do not move out of New Jersey, she will do whatever it takes.
And how large is the current building?
The current building is a hundred and twelve thousand square feet.
How many employees do you have?
We have approximately about three hundred, three hundred and twenty-two.
And how do your employees arrive at the facility, leave the facility?
A lot of them come by, by carpool, some get dropped off, and some come with, with vans to get there, and some bring cars.
And how many ships do you have?
Two ships.
How many employees do you have per ship?
For the first ship, we have approximately, uh, um, three hundred, three hundred and, about three hundred, and then in the night ship, we have about twenty.
And can you describe the proposed expansion or restriction?
The proposed expansion is approximately a hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
And what are the types of uses with the expansion, why do we need this expansion?
We need this expansion for a number of purposes. One of them is that we have trails, that we have too much product in that's sitting out in the yard, that we need to really expand the warehouse properly. We also would like to automate and put in much larger machinery that is gonna take much more space and a little bit of office, of office.
So the primary use is warehouse, is that correct?
Correct.
And what kind of employee increase do you anticipate per ship?
About between twenty-five and fifty per ship.
And you're doubling, you're doubling the size of the building, basically, you're only in this figure, twenty-five or fifty employees per ship. Can you explain why so low?
Yeah, the reason for that is, is because number one, warehouse is gonna use very, very few employees, and second of all, because of the automation that we would like to put in, we are going to be very, very sparse, and it's going to need to be less people than we have now in that area.
How many additional parking spaces are provided by these expansions?
I'm sorry?
How many additional parking spaces will be provided by these expansions?
Hundred and thirty-seven.
And have you been monitoring the number of vacant spaces on the day ship, which is your largest ship?
Yes.
And what are the results of that?
Ten o'clock in the morning, we did it, and for a week, and we saw that was a max of a hundred and thirty that was used.
And that's out of, what, a hundred and fifty-seven spaces?
Correct.
So based upon these results, and as a great number of employees, how many extra parking spaces do you think you need for the expansion?
Well, based on the current, we believe that we're going to need, you know, based on fifty, it's about twenty.
And that's, that's the same ratio that you had to have in terms of...
It's the same ratio, it's about forty to forty-five percent, right?
I have no questions, Mr. Grunheim.
Was it bottom mark, actually, is it one sixty-seven?
Yes.
Currently, it's gonna go up to about three hundred and four, three hundred and three.
You're gonna pass three hundred and five, please?
Three hundred and three.
You have a question?
Yeah, that's the plan.
And we, we keep it over part.
Well, I recognize that the owner that operates the building, you're not going to get out of the company, it's just this business only.
Correct.
I think that's what was said last time on the... Any board members have any questions?
Probably the building, if you went out of any other services, I'm okay.
Where is the loading dock story? I mean, it's gonna be this for, we have, is this trailers being marked inside apartments?
Trailers parked inside?
So you said you don't want to leave them out of the field?
No, no.
We see inventory.
Yeah, we ran out of space, so we had a lot of trailers, and we put them on to the outside.
It's not having that loading dock.
Let's not go for the chocolate. We have some.
No trailers will not be used anymore.
Right, the trailers, no.
And there's no loading dock on this addition?
Well, it's gonna be, um, according to the plan, it's gonna be...
Not a single one, I am.
We're back.
The, the only thing I don't understand is, apparently sixteen on the two thousand and fourteen resolution said a variance granted for parking, three hundred and three spaces provided, which six twelve were required. What does that mean?
That, I'll give you awareness, and Mr. Dickel will explain, because it, Jordan's is a little bit ambiguous in terms of the number of parking spaces that are required for this type of case. At that point, the determination was that six hundred and twelve spaces were required for the total expansion.
Per the code.
Per the code. And the variance that was granted was for three hundred and three parking spaces.
And now we're adding another hundred to that?
No, no, now we're hundred and sixty-seven, and we're adding, I have this connected, but it's like a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-seven.
It will be total of three hundred and sixty.
Correct, three hundred and three, yes.
Any other questions, any board members? Signal on our last promotion in the application.
I'll make motion to grant the...
Thank you.
How many years is the...
The pocket there?
It's an extension.
We're requesting four years and eleven months.
What's your position on that, since that's a puzzle comment, the last right idea, required for your extension?
Um, there, there's not much guidance.
Yeah, I don't think there's downside. There's probably more downside to not doing it than there is...
Okay, I'll look to the public. Anybody in the public, like your application, please come forward.
Moshe Zines, warrant to, um, the school of our Lake New Jersey, or it's a one.
Is your name, is your affirm? That's what I'm looking for, the support, the truth, the whole truth, and that's...
I affirm.
What's your last name, you're right?
Z I Z S. I think they may have seen my last name in the press before.
Which one?
Um, so as you heard, there are many people who, um, come by vans and they get dropped off, there's also a liquid shuttle stop over there. I was wondering if we can get a sidewalk in front of the property. As I'm sure you guys know, as it is, there are many people traveling over their grass.
I've never seen a condition added on to construction or extension. It's like you can...
Right, well, basically, well, I'll explain why I'm asking, because you've told the board in the past that they're, they're, they have, they have a plan approved, and in that plan are waiver and variances of different sorts. The board has to re-grant them now. So in that original request, was sidewalk waiver, sidewalk waiver was included at that time.
Yes, I'm looking at the...
You can look at it, go ahead.
I'm listening.
Um, and at the time, the board approved that waiver, so I'm just asking that, in this extension approval, that part of the approval, not that, that, that waiver not being re-granted?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Signal, we'll close it for the public. I would ask for motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to grant the extension for four years and eleven months, as per the application.
I'll second. Okay, and it's gonna be only used by Aster Chocolate, as part of, that's the reason why we're giving the waiver, the variance. And the variance, okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sabal.
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Rutter.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll tell you, it's always nice to see a local company that's currently making a success and having a nice presence on the big stage. And I'm gonna look for Aster Chocolate.
It's an O U D.
Apparently, Lake New Jersey wins out over Vegas, so.
I, I stayed at, I was at a convention, I stayed at Hotel Las Vegas, I turned over, and it's, it's, it's Belt, which is their, their California company, and they're really nationwide. You don't realize it unless you know what Aster Chocolate is, but it's a nationwide company, it's very, I was impressed.
It's amazing what Blackwood has going on in that industrial market.
Buildings will get built by, within the next four years? Excuse me? Buildings will get built?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, next.
Our next application is S P twenty-three seventy-one, made by Senator Nathan Bernbaum, who's the minor subdivision of the two lots, off of James Crest Court. I, I wanna address two potential concerns right off the bat, because I know when I first saw this application, my first reaction was this is a fight up. There is a secondary right appointment behind this property, so the two lots will actually be back to back, back to back, and it is not a fight up configuration. Second, there is a reference in a review letter to the design waivers for sidewalks, which the application will not be pursuing, so I just wanted to get those concerns weighed out.
Ready? Ready? Any... David?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Allie mentioned, the project is for a minor subdivision, and the, the lot will have two furnages, the reason for the second furnish is a tenant-wide strip for utilities. New Jersey, not a corporate company, doesn't like to do easements, so that's the reason for the double furnish. And there are a number of variances required for the project. Minimum lot area, uh, one, one lot's proposed to be nine thousand eight hundred seventy-four point oh nine square feet, the other, six thousand nine hundred ninety-five point three three square feet, whereas the lot area required is twelve thousand. Minimum lot width, new lot, forty-eight oh two, proposal width of eight three point three six feet, where's ninety feet is required, and a minimum rear yard setback is requested for proposed lot forty-eight oh one, which is from James Crest. Fifteen foot rear yard is requested, where's twenty foot is required. They should also give testimony regarding the Wall Street parking, where the existing house will remain on James Crest, and they also need a testimony on the existing shed. What's gonna happen with that, is if it's gonna be removed, or if it's gonna stay, which would require an additional variance. As far as mentioned, the design waiver that was shown on the plans for sidewalk along the railroad street, from what she said, I guess the map will be able to propel that now. And the other design waiver, um, was for providing street shoes.
Thank you.
So, I'm just, please, for again, if you have a comment, testimony before the board, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name.
Landlines, professional engineer, professional planner, the applicant is, Rowan Bernbaum's here, which is in questions for him, but he's to authorize me to speak on his behalf. And, as, they went through the letter, it was one, um, not error, but, uh, rear setback, the, the rear setback is not for the existing houses, for the proposed house, so it's for the...
Excuse me?
The proposed rear yard setback...
Right.
Is on the proposed lot, lot forty-eight oh one, not for the existing one.
Oh, okay.
So the proposed lot line between the two lots is, gives the existing house the required twenty-foot rear yard setback.
Gotcha.
For the record, Mr. Sabal has stepped down, has removed himself from the desk.
We're requesting a two-lot minor subdivision. This is an odd-shaped lot, it extends between James Crest Court and Railroad Street. Previously, Railroad Street had not been constructed, it's just been a dirt road along the railroad for years. Now that the, the development going in to the west suburbs of this lot, railroad avenue is being constructed, and, you know, rather than be, have, have a lot of crunnages on two streets, which is also kind of an odd situation, we're in to request a subdivision. The variances for lot area are, we have, check, here's the area. We have a nine eight seventy-four point oh nine, that's the new lot, which is on railroad avenue, and the other lot, which is six thousand nine hundred ninety-five, is for the existing house. That lot is sufficient for the existing house, we've been not creating variances, and that is the lot that we retain by the applicant.
That lot is sufficient for the existing house, we're not creating variances, and that is the lot that we retain by the avenue. Regarding to what, um, Allie had mentioned, New Jersey American does not allow sewer water lines in.
Headline, sir.
Uh, so we are, we are requesting a ten-foot strip of land that goes between the Railroad Street lot and James Crest. So the water and sewer can go through that, through that ten-foot wide strip and to the new home.
It's not going to be used as a drop.
It's not, it's not meant for access at all, cannot be used as a drop. Uh, they will have full frontage with, with the curb and sidewalk on Railroad Street. Uh, I have a copy of the tax map of the area. This is kind of unique, it's an area, uh, these lots are zone R-12, where everything around this area except to be on one zone is R-10. If this were zoned with all the other properties around it in R-10, we would be, uh, we'd be here most likely for duplex on the lot, because it is, uh, in excess of the lot size required for a duplex.
Would it be the flag for the second lot?
The flag is approximately eight hundred, is approximately eight hundred and forty square feet, so that will.
Would be in the north side of the flag.
We'd, we'd be up above the R-seven-five standards. And, and actually, from, and you bring up a good point, from the street, you'll, you'll never know that that's part of the lot, kind of really.
It's just an easement.
Part of the James Crest line, yes.
Well, it is just an easement.
Technically, it's any, if we could, we wouldn't provide an easement.
I understand, I know what you mean.
They just don't, will not allow you to put your water and sewer line through an easement.
So what's you for the, this, why?
So, there is no, there are no utilities in Railroad Street. There's no water, there's no sewer. So, uh, there is water currently in, uh, James Crest, and if this application's approved, we won't be bringing sewer up to this property, so that we can run a sewer and water lateral through that ten-foot strip to service the new residence.
So it's an easement, but it's.
No, it's not an easement.
It's coming owned by the new property.
It's owned by the lot in the back on Railroad. That's why Allie said, it, it looks like a flag, but it's not for access.
So it's owned by the lot on Railroad Street?
Yes.
So technically speaking, if the people on the front lot are walking on it, they're trespassing?
Yes, if they own the one there, they'd be trespassing. They may make that agreement, they'll take care of it, but that is the issue, or.
And there's going to be a road back here now?
It is currently under construction. Uh, I think, I don't know the number, but it, it comes from, it from James, as an, as a secondary access to a rather large duplex that I'm.
How much area do you say is R-10?
Around, around this lot, uh, it's probably. We were starting, it was. The R-10 is everything that's sort of shaded in blue around.
It's R-12. What streets are there in R-10?
R-10 basically runs along Williams Street, and so everything from Williams to Route Nine, and from James North is R-10. And then this little R-10A section, um, wraps around and comes out onto, uh, Prospect Street. So basically, everything around this, except for the M-one, which is where New Jersey American and the lumberyard and so, that's the, that's an M-one zone. Everything else around this is R-10. It's just this little pocket of R-12, which is out place. Regarding the comments in, in Dave's letter, we can address all those without any problem.
Does he have the rear yard?
Oh, you're right.
The rear yard?
Correct. Correct, it's a lot with, for that ten, ten-foot wide strip. Uh, yes, we did request a rear yard setback for a future home in front of Railroad Avenue. It's sort of an odd-shaped lot, and the town was, it's about, it's only about twenty feet deep. So we, we request additional variance for rear yard, get an additional five-foot, uh, line.
Building. The reason we requested, you said.
Well, everything, the area around it is all R-10, which has a large amount of duplexes.
You're saying the, this shouldn't have been R-10, because what I think is round is.
No, I, I, if you just went, if you go strictly by lot size, all the lots in that little R-12 comply, but. It's, it's out of place based on all the lots around, the whole area around it ends up, which allows duplexes. Not like they don't a whole.
Any questions on the board members? Has Allie discussed this with her neighbors?
I believe there's a number of neighbors.
Where's the place?
Not done, don't testify, I have a couple of questions.
Uh, the, uh, the existing, uh, house is fronting on James Crest.
Um, that's a four-bedroom house built on a slab, there's no basement, so apartment requirement would be for two spaces based on four bedrooms.
Okay, so you won't need a variance for Wall Street parking for that?
Correct.
And then, uh, the existing shed, is that going to be removed?
It'll be, it'll be moved either onto the, uh, forty-eight oh-two, or it'll be removed, we haven't made a decision on that.
So it will no longer be no barriers for an accessory building, or is it changed and applied?
That's correct.
And then, uh, uh, street trees, you're requesting the design waiver, correct?
Well, there are existing trees on the James Crest lot, so we're not proposing any street trees.
I mean, on, now, roadside.
Those will be shown on block.
Okay, so, so you won't, you won't need any design waivers for that?
No.
And, and the, uh, the technicality, because of the, uh, the ten-foot strip that, that he has, it creates the lot width variance for the front lot. Because the ten-foot strip, the one proposed lot line will be non-radio, because it'll be parallel to the sideline. So that's, that's a technicality.
Yes.
That's why it's listed as a design waiver.
Correct.
Okay.
And sidewalk, you're both sidewalk on Railroad Street there?
Yes, we are.
Both streets.
They're existing, it's existing on James, on James.
And you agreed to have a channel to the.
Yes.
Uh, we open up the, can I make the poll back to the board?
All the neighbors that came are, are in favor.
No, I don't. Anybody opposing the subvention? Ask for a motion.
Yeah, they motion approved the application.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Clansby.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel. Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer. Next application is SD twenty-three thirteen A-K, made by Abraham Lieber. Change of site plan exemption for an existing house on Promosa Drive to a city bar. That's a record for funding and retaining, let's return to Dave.
Yes, uh, submission waivers, uh, plan design by, uh, industry architecture, uh, signature block, uh, minimum building setback lines, general note about indicated method of water and sewer service, uh, parking areas with regard to dimensions, stalls, aisles, ADA spaces in surface, landscaping, lighting, topography, proposed grading, and location of dumpsters. Uh, the change of use also needs the following design waivers, providing shade tree utilities, providing lighting and landscaping, trash recycling, storage, proposed grading, and as far as zoning, um.
Are you free with all that? What's that? Are feelings around it?
That, that's up, that's up to the board, I mean, once you're the applicant, you get a testimony on outside of starts.
Okay, within three months is on the.
Oh, okay. Yeah, zoning, um, there's, uh, uh, side, setback variance for accessory structure, which is a shed, it's five point four feet from the sideline, which ten is required, and, uh, also accessory rear yard setback variance, it's three point seven from the, uh, rear lot line, where it's ten is required. And, uh, further buffer, the, that, that would go with the change of use, uh, because the shed buffers only three point seven feet, where normally twenty is required.
That's all consistent, they're not proposing any rules?
Correct. Correct, those, uh, those variant situations.
I do, Ryan Ploner Jackson, New Jersey license, professional, senior professional planner. As indicated, we're taking an existing full-story dwelling, uh, and converting it to a shul with a seven-hundred thirty-two, where for sanctuary, I have two maps. I do one is the plan that's submitted, which shows the existing, uh, structure, the, the shed in the back. A two is a copy of the tax map in the area. Uh, as you can see, this is like in the door, easily far down, uh, to the back, it's the basic P and L easement. So with respect to the impact of the, uh, the sheds, it's very little impact on that. Uh, this is a, we'll call that self-contained area, where it's a small shul, uh, it's in a, uh, area where for an evening shul, the, uh, walk distance to a lot of people, the mayor's actually walk distance, he didn't even. And, and provides, uh, and very beneficial use, so when we look at the, uh, relief that's requested, uh, the, the waivers relate to something that was being, being designed and built, we're not proposing to build anything. We don't need any parking for a shul, a sanctuary of less than eight hundred square feet. Uh, the, uh, the setbacks to the, the shed are classic C-two variances, the benefits outweigh the detriment, leaving the shed there, and there is no detriment to it. Uh, the current air buffering, again, if you look in the area that it's in, uh, it's existing house, the separation, uh, on a whole size of the house is sufficient. Um, so it, it's my testimony that, uh, if it's, uh, if we grant it by a board without any detriment, it's an old plan of zoning, with any detriment, all the good. Um, the, there are no others, ancillary use to the shul, there's no simple hall replacement. Uh, the tenants in the neighborhood, they'd be booking, uh, if there is some availability, non-street parking, to the extent that some of the people thought they, they would have that, uh, they may be, um, non-street parking. The, uh, it would clearly will be maybe accessible, everyone according to the building format. Uh, the trash and recyclable will be rollout containers, so it's E W approval. Uh, and you would, uh, need all the actual requirements that the R V requires. If you look at the master plan of two thousand seventeen, the digital statement, encouraged development and redevelopment on Park of Clank, principal business, wise efficient, educational, archaic, community facilities, and need for needs, each of these, uh, under the municipal land use law ended eighteen forty-one fifty-five D two, the purpose of the act. Encourage this lack of the guy to use, properly set up the land in the same manner, which is more self-conscious, and this is the end.
Any questions on any board members? Yes, there's. The sanctuary is seven hundred and thirty square feet? So that's like twenty by thirty-five, as a, as a individual shul. They're keeping the same house.
Yeah.
Around building.
Correct.
We're all pro in here, we like twenty-five guys.
Yeah, Moshe Ziz, one, two, I'm from Spalvore Lake, New Jersey, or it's another one. I certainly do, the applicant, um, Mr. Avio here happens to be a great guy. I think that he got ten bucks for me, for a shul, and, uh, no, really, I think it's a good place. Um, as, as, as Mr. Brian said, there are a lot of people there, and they have to have a shul, so go for it.
We're all here for a shul. All pro, all pro.
How much, how much power would you give?
The whole, the whole side, the right side of the property, technically, could put. Um, there's also a street, there's no house.
Please state your name for the record.
Avram Lieber, twelve twenty-four Delmar Road, Lake, New Jersey.
Mr. Ryan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony will give me, before this court, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name slowly and spell your last name.
Avram Lieber, L-I-E-B-E-R.
Please proceed.
So, uh, the parking, right now, the Promosa Drive, starting from, from this, um, this house, until there's a probably three hundred feet of Promosa Drive that has, there's no houses facing. Yeah, so this is, this is Gold Oak, yeah, this is, no house over here. And the next house is going over here.
Walls are broken.
Here, right here. I can't.
They, they front on the other road, on Delmar Road.
Well, that house fronts on Promosa, and there's another house across the street from him, but this whole section, there's no houses facing, facing the Promosa Drive. It's not possible.
So, so how many parking lots can we put?
In fact, it, uh, it would be at least ten cars on each side, you know, running along the curb.
On the actual property, though?
Oh, on the property?
Can you put gravel?
You can, if, if you have to, if that's not, if the curb parking is not good enough, we, we can do that. But just on the curb, bothering the neighbors, there's no houses, we can have a lot.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Clansby.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you. The next application is SD twenty-three twenty-six A. I'll give a moment for the applicants to come in and give a comment, keep it quiet here. This is an amended, from the area filed major site plan for a school gym. This application, this application tried to come back under correspondence, but more than felt the changes were significant enough that it should be amended application with notice. They have provided said notice, and they've submitted. They have submitted abbreviated site plans, given, given that they are. They have submitted abbreviated site plans, given that they intend, are just to install a gym on the existing developed site. So you will see a large list of the waivers that are required, but you should at least be permitted to look at the applicants. They were previously approved for a daycare to be handed onto this developed school site at St. Westerstall Building. They are proposing that we not build the daycare, and instead propose to build a gym, a standalone gym, for its own instead, given that the parking requirements for a school are based on the number of classrooms. The additional gym does not necessitate additional parking spaces or completion changes, which is why they've submitted such an amended, such an abbreviated version of the site plan.
Yes. We have, the board needs to act on submission waiver. There were no architectural drawings submitted for the gym, and so the board may have to take an action on whether that's acceptable before that case you can go forward. And then they may want to provide testimony as to why that is.
Good evenings. Mary Weinstein, on behalf of the applicants, I'm just going to go right in. We are here this evening, as Ally said, and I think Mr. Stern, you weren't here last month, but we actually, last meeting. We actually, we actually started this last meeting. We are seeking amended site plan approval. What do you want me to discuss? All right, that's what I'm wondering. Did he finish that? I was gonna ask you, did he finish? Just let him finish.
No, you didn't. You need to testify as to why the submission waiver for not providing architectural plans for the gym, so that the board can take action on the submission waiver, whether to go forward.
Can we have one more?
That's it. Brian Flyer Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. He agrees with me, he's said he has architectural plans for the gym, as it's, it's a very simple application. It's going to be a one-story gym on a slab, thirty-one high, is paying that local game playing. You know, they have the availability of playing outside now, this will make it, so they can have a gym playing inside. The plant will be provided to the board, the applicant will expedite the process. We gotta wait while the plans are done, and then we can go through the rule, and we slow it down, and ultimately, to the benefit of the general public and kids, who come in now. And I don't think the board is going to have any different opinion of a gym, it's a rectangular hog set, if they don't play.
So we're gonna have another bite of the apple when plans come back?
No, the, the board professionals will save the plans, to make sure it complies with all the requirements. But typically, when plans are shown to the, to the board for, whether it's a residential or a commercial, it's so that the board can see what the facilities are, to know what the parking needs are, to know if the facility is going to meet the needs of the public. And a gym, we all know what goes on in a gym, and the reason for asking you to do it this way is to expedite the process.
Yep, going back, there are no variances requested for the proposed nasium. The project will be, the amended site plan will require design waivers. Previously, with the daycare facility, Lambert Avenue, which is on the east side of the drawing, and Vermont Avenue, which is on the west side of the drawing, those two roads are being approved along the frontages. With the daycare facility, now, without the daycare facility, they're requesting waivers from, from approving those frontages.
Yes. So as indicated in the, in the result, the, with respect to the design waivers, what we're doing is we're not creating any additional activity on the site. What we're doing is to apply any, any more placement, like for the children to appropriately have...
Where, where was the original building supposed to be?
Well, I, I would prefer not to look at, because of daycare, because this isn't a daycare, daycare brings four kids and more employees. Then this is, the location of the daycare that was approved was in this area. The school that was approved was the school front of the Oak Street. The Oak Street area is a school type of place, and why it was approved, that Oak Street for all the access, all the vehicular traffic, not the most. And we looked on A two, that shows the, the area, the Schuyt Street across the street, the Gold Oak across the street, and the land at North from the show, which is what I think so, so. It appears that this area is going to turn into a school type area, and each school will provide the access and the needs for what it has. The property to the west of us, lot eleven fifty-seven is New Jersey American, because that, that's not me, and eleven forty-eight is New Jersey American, they have some wells there. It's an area that has some trees, the trees are going to stay. And what we're asking is just that this nice little school area, to be able to have the gym with it.
Go back to the design waivers. We don't want to approve for a long term, how it's happening?
That's correct. We want to leave the access just as it is. We have the parking lots, we, we have the parking that serves all the students that are currently here. We're not adding any, any more students. They have access from all of these facility. We're not proposing any new parking, we're not proposing any, any new driving access. We're just proposing to put a, a gym in the back open area.
Brian, can I answer your question?
Can I, can I, can I answer the question? The original approval was for a daycare facility. The daycare facility in the same location, we believe the daycare was a little bit larger than the gym is going to be, but in the exact same location, we were supposed to put a daycare. A daycare would have brought a lot of new traffic. Obviously, there'd be parents that are dropping off and picking up their children, and there're different children that are going to the school. So at that point, it was agreed as a condition of approval to improve Lambert Avenue and Vermont Avenue. Now what we're doing is, the daycare is off the table, and we are putting in a gym. This gym is going to service the very same girls that attend the Most of Our Girls Elementary School. No new girls are attending the school because of this gym. There's no new trap vehicle or traffic. All the girls are coming on the buses in the morning and getting picked up in the afternoon. The gym doesn't change the traffic requirement. Therefore, there is no reason to put a tremendous financial burden on the school to improve these roads, when they're not going to help in any way, and our, the change is not affecting. The roads, and they would only be paid up to our property, up to our property loans, and they go nowhere at the moment.
If there's any change of use on the gym, it'll be back in front of the line?
Yes. You're not, so you're not doing any changes?
I do. I want to add on over here, in the near future, the school is going to turn back to the high schools, with God's help, on the next block of the line. The students are going to come back and do all the construction, all the roads, as required, as I said, now, because we haven't got enough.
No, but it wasn't actually.
But we're just, we're just, again, we're not just saying, I want to build up, but it makes sense, right? I want to do it right now, and not bring the school back to the kids, back to the back.
The condition on the original approval was to finish Vermont, up, up until where?
Up until halfway the school, only half the road, which makes sense.
That was the condition, not until the end of the line?
That's really not...
That's what you thought?
The planning wouldn't make any sense.
That's done, though. Sui, guys. But that, that's already approved?
Right.
So the question, you have fifty feet halfway, just halfway, small part of it is already done, up until halfway to the building? That's done?
The decision, the decision approval of, of the daycare was...
Let's talk about Vermont, just Vermont. So halfway is done, halfway past the parking lot, something like, parking lot halfway is done, then there's another twenty, maybe forty feet, up until the end of the building.
Okay.
That's the question, that you don't want to approve halfway?
That's, that's on that point, correct, which, you might have said, half the road makes some sense, you'll be, that, a half, literally half of the road.
It's a halfway.
The half of the road.
Right.
Importantly, on Lambert Avenue, we had a whole new, the whole parking lot, served the...
The daycare. That's how we're not going to...
This move is going to be a little additional, you'll be careful with your, that, that people come back.
No, no, we are requesting the designer approve, we're providing the justification for it to win, the designer approves.
Same as the designer, we're looking at the schools. When the daycare is different use, so the daycare needed, we're saying we're just a gym. We're asking for the same waiver that we got with the school, because we're not changing the activity. And as just for our back end case, there will be development of other schools in the area, and at that point, the rules will be done.
Any other questions on the board members? Yeah, number, isn't that part of the driveway, the access driveway now? So I'm just trying to figure out where, where is that, or what are you trying to afford?
If you look, if you look at the monitor, and then put up the provisional page, okay, so they were sending Lambert all the way to the back end of the property to put in a new access for the daycare. That's back here, where they were proposing the daycare. I imagine the existing pavement ends up here, where there's an existing access.
I would open up to the public, can I have the public, like to be heard, just come forward? I'm moving closer to the public. I just want to, I want to put on, on the record, Vermont, I drove down today, it's open all the way, gravel and sand and stones, people drive through all the time, I guess from Essex Street, or continuously from Chestnut all the way up. People drive all the time over this. I think improving that part even half of it is a lot better than nothing. That's what I think. I drove today, you can drive, easy, car goes back, it's...
I apologize, half the road is only, on the boundary, it's much more faster, the art of the path, the nature, throughout labor, through the eighteen tracks, you can't have stomach, it's pointless to hold the school...
So can we ask you to finish both sides? Well, you're getting, well, you're in Lambert, and then you put it on the side. Okay, listen, let's stop, let's stop yelling. Yeah. That's what I, that's, I, you can drive there, people drive, the kids and families, and many of them, see, and it's right there. It's too late, too late. I think you put, maybe rock it with concrete, the barriers. Maybe that's an option. Well, you have a condition of approval for that, so...
I mean, this, this, Mr. Sable, it's, it's a school with just a heavy financial burden. The school is not going to be using that road. It's everybody else that's going to be using out of the school.
Something has to finish that property. I know it's gonna happen, though. Who knows what's gonna happen, though? I guess, okay. So I think Vermont's being finished, that's what I think. The other part, I don't understand.
I first found out what everyone else was doing, and we came close. Stop. Monk and James.
I'm sorry, just, gentlemen? Thank you. Well, the, the future potential application, is that to the east of the existing Most of Our Girls, letting it touch Vermont?
That's a good question, and we'll work on it, we'll keep it in public parcels, and with other parcels, we will, we will go ahead and post, we will come back and approve it. Both with, not halfway, not quarter with, we'll go ahead and facilitate, say, maximum size. With the curbs outside, that's where the...
I make a motion to approve it, based on...
Did you open it, Sam?
Sure, did it open, yes. I, I think we should continue with Vermont, whatever was the condition originally, and regarding Lambert, I agree to, that we don't have to finish that. That's my intention, motion. Now, who wants to make a motion? For the second? Well, second. We're very sensitive.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
No.
Mr. Klanska?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer? Thank you. S P twenty-three oh nine, twenty-three oh nine, excuse me, hey, by combination, Chi Y Israels, Mr.... Thank you. Mr. Meyer will be stepping down to the application, we do still have five. This is a major site plan for a school located on Pittsburgh.
Yes. This has some submission waivers for information within two hundred feet. We can support those submission waivers for the, for the information within two hundred feet, before there is enough information provided for the design. There's also submission waiver from showing existing well accepting systems on the site, and we can support that, because Ocean County Board of Health approval will be required for any amended... And then they're requesting a submission waiver from providing profiles, however, they, they will provide as a condition of any approval. Right now, they're, they're still in the design phase with the utilities, and that's the reason. And they're also requesting submission waiver for a treatment, takes a management plan to complete this, and will provide that as a condition of any approval. So the board should take action on the submission waivers. Okay, zoning, there is a variance required for the number of parking spaces. Fifty-five are required, forty-two are provided, and there's also relief required from perimeter buffers, twenty feet is required, and there is virtually no perimeter buffer proposal on the site.
The plan show forty-two are required. The plan show parking spaces, forty-two required, forty-two forty.
Uh, that is not clear. And I, and I will tell you why. If, if you recall, we've gone through this with the board, specifically directed to follow the ordinance, and, and see if the ordinance says one point five spaces for hundred square feet, once you're over three thousand square feet of sanctuary area. So that's how we calculate it, fifty-five. Oh, they, well, what, at the plan review, there was a, there's a, they had, originally they had catering room in the basement, and they're not proposing that, they're only proposing a kiddish room, which, which would be used for shovel selling, so pointing factored into the parking count. So they, they do not need as many spaces as they first came in, originally.
Originally, they need eighty-five. Yeah. According to your count, they need forty.
Correct. Correct. Uh, the buffer relief we're talking about.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mary Weinstein, on behalf of Congregation Chi Y Israels. This application is for preliminary final site plan approval to construct a brand-new two-story synagogue on the property. This neighborhood has been cropping up with lots of new homes, if you've noticed, and is a very fast-growing area, and hence the need for a new shul. Just going to ask the, the supporters of the congregants of the shul to just raise their hands, just to show that they're here in support of this application. The applicant worked very hard to make this a virtually variance-free application. The applicant, we will, our testimony will show, we've come up with another thirteen parking spaces, we actually had fifty-five parking spaces to comply with Terry's calculations. Brian will go through those in a moment. Uh, as far as that, the, the, the hall, that was a mistake. It was never meant to be a catering facility. It's a simple kiddish shul, like every shul has that, a shul of this size would certainly have. And on Shabbos, they should be able to hold the kiddish in the, in that, in that room. But there is, that is not for, um, outside catering. Um, that's, that's, that's basically it for this part. Let me ask if we can add Brian's sworn. I know he wasn't sworn yet on this one.
You swear a firm testimony or give me proof of this?
I do. I'm a planning deck, senior licensed professional engineer, professional planner. Uh, I, I could go into a whole conversation on how we count parking and the whole history of it. It's easier to say, we heard your engineer, he said fifty-five is the right number. I have a, a plan, uh, I have four. Eight-one is a, an area rendering showing where the property is. And I think, uh, Ally's, uh, Google map is probably nicer, but, uh, eight Uh, eight, eight-two is a map of the site. It's shy. This is new.
I think I can put that up. I'm sorry, I need that.
Okay. So eight-two is a copy of the site plan. Now, what I've indicated on the northerly side, we would do nine parallel parking spaces. On the, uh, southerly side of the building, where we had one parking space, uh, shown in a rather large area, we're gonna put four parking spaces there. So we'll have the fifty-five parking spaces that are required by, uh, the ordinance. In, in order to accomplish that, the building will go over two feet and, and the road will go over two feet. But we, we had the room to do that. So it all is virtually the same plan, but we added, uh, thirteen parking spaces, you know, from forty-two to fifty-five. The applicant, uh, doesn't necessarily agree with the calculation of the, the board's engineer, but does agree that more parking is best. We're in, we're in Lake, we're on the Tom River, we're in Tom River, we can go for less.
Why don't you agree with, with the engineer's calculation?
Well, because, uh, I think the ordinance, it says, from, we all know zero to eight hundred you're done. And it used to be that then when you did eight hundred and one, you needed one parking space. You got up to two thousand, you needed twelve, because you took the eight credits. We understood the eight credits no longer there. But we thought you did, and as my dear friend, Scott Cannelly, takes, when you do your taxes, that if you're in the first bracket, you do the two thousand square feet, you have twenty to the first two thousand square feet. When you get into the next bracket,
So only because I, I like a good argument?
Okay. I, I think I'm right, but giving more parking is the right thing to do.
Yeah, but just for future applications, I want you to know you're wrong.
For future applications, I, I will know if you disagree with me.
But, but what show has fifty-five parking spaces? Fifty-five is a good number.
I agree.
Gate, gate three is a rented version. Obviously, there'll be thirteen more parking spaces. And eight-four is just a tax map, which when you have all the other plans, you, you really don't need that as much. But, uh, so it, it's a permitted use. Uh, it, it's inherently beneficial use, it's a use of
Just for, for variance-free rent?
It's variance-free.
It's variance-free.
It's variance-free.
With the modification, with the modification, and the thirteen parking spaces.
What came to, starting with the plans, are you all agree with us?
Some, some of the things in the plans were, uh, providing, uh, testimony, the, uh, the buffering leave. Uh, as you can see on eight-three, on the side, we're gonna have a fence, uh, providing a tent to the buffer. And in the rear of it, we, we have plenty of buffer. Uh, you can see from, uh, eight-one, that, that inferior area here is very well operated. It's a wooded area with a collection corner that comes from the Etteah Road area and crosses, uh, like the road. Uh, as indicated in the report, we need a, uh, a D P K permission list, which is applied for and as a relatively routine, uh, uh, permit application where you follow the rules and, and you get that permitted. And, uh, the last thing is going to provide testimony in respect to the identification signs and the identification of the sign, which we think is more of the ordinance. Uh, I don't think the, and if we're doing anything beyond that, I think Danny would have to come back.
Any questions? So this is, if this was, was this originally put down as a catering hall and then you made it a kiddish room?
It was, it was a mistake. The engineer wrote it up and it was labeled as a catering hall. It was never meant to be a catering hall.
So if it was a catering
Our architect themselves.
If it was a catering hall, how many parking spots would we need?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Right, yeah, probably, roughly anyhow.
So the kitchen is, is light on details. Is there any gas supplies coming in there, or is that something we even get to this point?
Well, I, I think it would be typical of the kiddish hall in any shul of this company. Obviously, the shul may see as clients, uh, and pick up the ones that would provide the, the services for that. Not anything similar to
So I'm counting ceiling tiles here in this building. This room is about forty by fifty. This room is proposed to be fifty-one by fifty-eight. So this kiddish room is bigger than this room.
Yeah, because it, it's gonna be used for a kiddish. It can be used to host meals for, for somebody's, uh, parties on, on Shabbos, which is why it's used for, it's for Shabbos use only.
Oh, this is big on the shul?
Again, it's used, it's not being used for outside catering. It's not being used for weekday use. It's being used for Shabbos use. And that's why there's no parking.
What is, what is the fire occupancy back there on the wall? Can't read that far back down there.
I, I presented from the actual hundred and twenty. I can tell you.
Mr. Cannelly reports, I will promote her, so this is, uh, fire occupancy at two-twenty. And that is a function of, of the doors as far as
Function of what?
The doors as far as the space, where like, you know, about fires. But this, you know, for, for barricades.
The, Mr. Chairman, the applicant would like to be sworn to, uh, firms to just be able to tell the board directly what the plans are with that room, if you don't mind.
Okay. Sir, please raise your hand to confirm that the constable is ready to put the board of the district to hold you in that direction.
Yes.
Yes, let's go. Y I T Z C H O K G R O S S.
And your position with the applicant?
I think I am the applicant.
I don't know, I don't
No, I am, I, I'm sorry.
What's your role as, what's, uh, the, uh, appropriation?
I'm, 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 I'm a officer, I'm a officer in the corporation. A man of the year.
He's one of the, he's one of the officers.
Okay. So please first the shul on the wall.
Right. What I want to say is that we, we, you don't want the, the traffic during the week of, of, uh, of, uh, people coming back and forth to use, to use the halls. So we're not, you don't want as a catering hall. I don't know why it was in the board's side. We don't want traffic. We want people to come and down and learn there and not have like
No, but what's the purpose of that?
On Shabbos, we love, have a very nice place for people to make nice, nice kiddish.
And they just have the workers' question.
One of the whites are big.
Right.
It's very nice. Do you keep coming over sometimes?
You just tell the board, what, what's the purpose of it? To use on Shabbos for, uh,
Education.
Just to use for people to make, uh, their, their meals and their meals.
Did you make a promise for the other?
Right. You make a promise for Shabbos.
No, it's, it's better when both people don't talk at once.
It's possible.
My understanding is that, 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 my understanding is that we don't want it to be used as a whole during the week. We don't want the traffic, a lot of the shul people to come from the parking lot and learn about.
But once you realize the cost of the shul, you get an income from the, from the, from the nice beautiful hall in the basement, you get the basement share. How, how are you gonna stop that? How can you, it's show, comfort the board, know that about, you know, half of the day of fifty percent less parking. We, we've seen this movie before, yeah. And Debbie Shaw Lake would say the same thing to me now. Harry Goats, I'm a lover.
Joe, Joe, open up this chair.
Who knows, it's gonna happen twenty years from now.
It's gonna sink.
Maybe if you know, there's a lead in reservation, if someone has a party, let the picture always hold the impression on them. A couple more.
Right, I can't say anymore. I'm saying it's a shul, we don't want it. We are, we're self-financed, we're, they're getting very much in case you realize, because we're the one person. He's taking care of it. You want a nice shul on Shabbos, it's a good decision. We don't want the traffic, still coming, visiting, coming, coming to learn and downloading for parking and leaving, no, there's a coming up. That is how, that's what we want, that's what we want is to take care of. I can't say. No, 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 no.
We put the area out, and there's one on the board, of course. Where, where do people park when they show up and, and there's not a, enough parking?
Do they have fifty-five?
Fifty-five parking spaces.
Does that ask you a favor? Well, theoretically. Then I ask comparison. Okay, thank you.
And, and just, just about, I mean, because of not making parties there during the week, there shouldn't be more than fifty-five cars there at any given time. Fifty-five parking spaces is more than most shuls in the neighborhood have.
And, and what about, hold on.
No, but there is no, the symbol is not being used during the week. It's, it's really not designed for that.
And they clarified, before the board changed the way it was calculated, it would have been thirty-four spaces were required.
That's why we changed it though.
We're providing twenty-one more spaces than the same facility would have been, which would have kept it going by light here. So seventy-five, and, and, and I've heard the board say, provides for parking in accordance with the ordinance. Uh, we're providing, and according to what they script this conservation.
Honestly, this applicant really, really went above and beyond. The, 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 no, but this one, they really did. The person who is financing this shul really wants there to be enough parking, wants it to look nice.
I would respect that applicant following the rules.
Okay, this is the first time. Okay, they followed the orders.
And the only way to have is by that.
All the rules, same, same with this, thank you.
Don't yell anything.
We can yell here though. I, I think we have a pass, a pass for, uh, not to do a gas line in the kitchen. If the applicant will be okay with that, it'll be great. If it comes about, I think Mr. Stern's gonna say that as well. I think it can cool and everything else, it can warm and keep it
Mr. Jackson, I, I need a two-minute break. We don't have a pause, I'm not sure if I have to. All right.
We could, there's an audience jack, if you see that.
For music.
I'm gonna catch a camera check.
It's one issue now, it's not so. That's where
I think because I have, uh, the, uh, two years.
Have like a tone?
Maybe it's not a story, you know.
This is a deal, the shul, the deal, the shul. Come to the cabinet. What's the problem, Washington?
We don't want it. We don't want it.
No, I don't want, I don't want.
I don't want to go. No.
I want to be in that one or four. I, I would open up to the public here. Anybody from the public like to be heard, please come forward. Please state your name and residence, you have to raise your hand to the media. One and one to the turn.
My name is Walter A. Kabachowski.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony or his word of interest, the whole truth?
I do.
Please tell your last name for the record.
K O V A C O F S K Y.
And please provide your address.
Nine Good Road, Block fourteen.
And so you're patiently, since we started, not saying a word, model citizen.
I answer. This is the first time in front of the distinguished board as well.
Thank you. Please proceed.
It's going to be